Real quick, a couple of other things. News from City Hall, which is always exciting. My little raid about the Stonebury Economic Development Authority today and in recent weeks. Couple of people in council are interested in Stonebury coming to the city, but we're also interested in having new property owners like your city council. And right now, the deal kind of lacks that. There is a proviso in the current deal, which of course, we were not, couldn't read the lease until after we had signed it. I won't even get into that, but that's the way, that's the way the law works. But, once we did find it, once we did read it, we made a change, or we'd like to make a change, as you read about today. And the EDA would be allowed to keep any excess revenue that they have to spend on other projects, but the only way city council would find out is in their annual report. So, we're asking for either the money go directly towards a part of the Stone project, or that they have to tell us when and if they use money. Basically, Parker had the lawsuit put in the amendment that you read about today. That would, all the excess revenue, if there was any, would come back to the city for things like a boiler for the school, or for streets, or something leaf collection. And then I mentioned earlier, after Glenn's report, we put in a resolution to reallocate the money that is not going to the Chaco Bottom, infrastructure improvements, and go towards, if not all of it, most of it to schools' facility needs. And we think that's more important. The Chaco baseball is still theoretical at best. And we know, one thing that's kind of lost in that is, when we made that deal last early May, we did not have the report from Tommy Crans at the Richmond Public Schools yet. It came out about a month later about the dire need of the current facilities. He's not asking for brand-new schools all over the place. He's just asking for roofs that don't leak, and air conditioning and heating that work. So, that's what, Michelle Mooney and I were supposed to meet with the mayor later this week, maybe next, and see if that money can be reallocated. I'd rather see it go to schools than have the mayor to put it back in his budget, which is due in March. I think I know the answer I'm gonna get, but I'm gonna call you anyway. Miscellaneous, museum district is having a town hall meeting March 4th at St. Benedict's on Bell Line across from Zeus Gallery. Mary Munford Elementary School is having an auction March 21st. It's now on sale. I've shown their website, or their Facebook page, where they're buying the schools. And then, this school, Albert Hill, they had a Facebook page for a few months, but now they're on Twitter, and they have a blog. So, if you're interested in coming here, or sending your children here, or just wanna know what's going on in the neighborhood, they've got great new social media. Now, Dr. Bennet is here. And I've asked him to come because a couple of weeks ago, read his academic improvement plan that he's put forth for the school system. There's a video of his presentation last week on my website. It started at the 27-minute mark, it takes about half an hour, but it gives you an idea of how serious Dr. Bennet is about his job. And I am a huge fan, and I'm not just blowing smoke, of his efforts to fix this school district. He is not messing around. He does not care about political turf, or political favors, or political friends. He's here to make the school system worthy of everybody sending their kids to Richmond Public Schools. He also knows, like many of us, that not every kid's gonna go to Harvard. And we're not gonna probably perform test scores like Ken Wright, and we're Fairfax. But he knows that he can get this system, get this shit right to the point where people are comfortable about spending 20 years here raising their kids rather than the middle school battle. I had two weeks ago, the reason I asked Dr. Bennet is, two weeks ago, I got a call from a friend of mine who's also a parent of four kids in public schools. His oldest goes here. And he said that he was so upset the night before, he got into a really bitter argument with his wife about moving to the county or not. He didn't want to, she did, with the kids who are the most annoying thing. And the next day, I asked Dr. Bennet if he would come and speak tonight, because I believe in his vision for what he's gonna bring to the school system if we don't scare him off, which I hope we don't. I wanna keep him around as long as possible. We have a tendency to do that with superintendent. And I don't want that to happen. And I want him to talk about, have enough time to talk about his vision for the schools, especially in this district, for you parents, but also citywide. Because if the school system gets fixed citywide, you're talking about rising property values, people that wanna live in the city, and more revenue for things like leaf collection in schools, and other things that are important that government shouldn't be spending money on. So, Dr. Bennet, I hope I didn't blow you up too much, but I really believe in you. Please welcome Dr. Bennet. And real quick, the school system is out in a meeting. For those of you that came in late, I had 7:15 in this building, kinda cutting it a little short. So, Dr. Bennet's gonna close out the meeting. We'll be around afterwards and wrap up around 7:15. So, I'll turn over. Dr. Bennet?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh my goodness, y'all must be sleepy. Good evening. First, I'm gonna start with a news couple faces to you. I'm gonna start with the local fan favorite, new to Richmond Public Schools, is the principal here at Albert Hill. Ms. Knight, can you tell them a little bit where you came from?
Sure, sure, sure. I am extremely grateful and privileged to be serving here at Albert Hill. I am coming from Loudoun County in Northern Virginia, where I served there for several years as an assistant principal. And prior to that, I was at the district in an urban school setting, and an elementary school as a principal. And so now I'm here in Richmond, and we made that decision intentionally because we have a family north of us and south of us, and this was kind of the great hub. And Richmond is just a wonderful and beautiful place to live. And so, again, I'm privileged to be here serving our students and you in this community. So, thank you.
Joining us is the new chief of staff. This is Hunter Frehley?
No, six now.
Six, he's been in? Wow, okay. Ms. Hunter, joining us, new chief of staff. And next to Ms. Knight is Rob Westbay, the money guy. The guy who wanna make sure that, like, is responsible, right? Efficient, effective? Yeah, she's getting excited right now. Mrs. Westbay, who's in Virginia, joins another district here in Virginia. To his left is Mr. Jeffries, who's joining us. He's a principal at Lee High School in Fairfax County. He's joining us, he oversees all middle schools and high schools. And the right lady, too, is a person who's been here with us for years, but I think town was underutilized. So she recently applied for a vote to be the new director of student services. But what you may, many of you all will recognize, ma'am, the baby face, is that we were able to give back responsibility for choicey, and then we also created an awesome family and community engagement. So, she works very hard to make sure the kids are at school, that they're not running around on the school over the day. And that's Ms. Angela Jones. To her far left is the former associate superintendent in Anarundale County Maryland, which is a well-regarded, high-performing district in Maryland, just like Fairfax is in Virginia. She came down and joined us to be the associate superintendent of academic service, Ms. Andrea King. I wanna start out with the end in mind. Two things happened recently in the last few weeks, which was rolled out and acting on a different plane, which was actually most requested by several councilmen. They just talked about, what are we gonna do differently to ensure that we get better at the product that we're producing? Now, picture this, education is economic development. Everybody agree with that?
Absolutely.
Because businesses, believe it or not, pick locations to accommodate employees by looking at school systems and what's happening with it, okay? We are, I believe, national defense. We really are, because an educated population produces the backbone of the future of America when it comes to national defense. We also are the biggest stick against poverty. Twenty-six percent in the city, which you need to know that number jumps to about 40% when you just look at the school age population. Forty percent is a pretty large number. But at the end of the day, if you have the ability to be a productive citizen in society, and that means college and/or career really. If I say and/or, because even if you make career programs, you want still be a pathway that you can choose. Because you can be in a career pathway and still go to college. You can be on a career pathway and decide you just wanna go straight to industry. So it has to be both. And that's what we're trying to create with Richmond Public Schools. But the end in mind is this, and I think the word's been up there several times already, believe it or not, it's really easy about choices, the reallocation of resources. So when we did the budget presentation, the very last slide really got to the core of not saying that we start with the idea of more taxes. What we really start with is a conversation about reallocation of resources, and making decisions about what it is we could, and where we spend the money. I've asked that of the mayor, we shared that in the presentation for the city council, we even do it inside our shop. So for example, one of the things that I ask our finance staff for is that the state requires us to allocate and report money based on categories. And one particular category says administration, attendance, and health. They blub it together. So I said, Mr. Westbay, I want the administration cost. I wanna see what we're spending on administration. So, anybody think, what do you think we're spending on administration and school district? Anybody 1%? Anybody?
Four and a half.
How much?
Four and a half.
Fifty? 2.7%. Seven point nine million dollars out of about 260 million dollar budget. Anybody 1%? My state categorization goes to instruction and RPS. This is it, I don't have any prizes. You'll get a free Subway sandwich. Somebody give me a guess?
Seventy percent.
Oh my goodness, you guys are pretty good. Seventy-five percent. And I share that with you, because one of the things that I have to do as a superintendent is first, ask someone smarter than me about the money. And then, tell them what is you wanna accomplish with money. And that is, as much of the money going towards what? Your classroom, okay? But here's the challenge we have. We're dealing with what I would call deferred effort, deferred contribution, deferred maintenance. Meaning that the roosters are coming home to crow because we put off things for years and years and years. So your councilperson is talking about the facility issue. Facility issue that he talked about, the thirty-seven million dollars is just the basics. Like he said, roofs, boilers, silver stuff. That's not even the beginning, it's your true modernization of buildings. So I remember walking up to this building for the community interview, and thinking, wow, this is pretty static, pleasing, and impressive building. But walking inside, I also felt disheartened and disappointed with the lack of care and taking care of it. And then I asked myself, why is it that I can walk in Chesterfield or Hemlock? By the way, they get more money from the state than we do per kid. Which is beyond me. But the simple answer to that, and a complicated formula, that they make it harder so nobody can understand it is, they have not adjusted for the poverty or the need base. They assume, because we have a lot of businesses in the city who are wealthy, instead of looking at your student need population. So that's another story, I won't get into that. Not much you know of it. So if you ever have someone see it, you tell them that, okay? Just don't tell them to come over here. But we don't have to have in America. Children's quality of education can be determined by the zip code. But that's what we have right now. We absolutely do have it. Statewide, even the state now is admitting, and you may not know this, the priority schools, when they look at the data for all the schools that are priority status in the state of Kansas, demographic profile is this, 80% of them are free or youth lunch, 80% minority. That is the makeup of every school that is listed, it's not meeting the state standard. So I would tell you, ladies and gentlemen, the state is not admitting. In Virginia, we really don't have no child up behind. We have children that are being left behind. The bigger picture is, Virginia's still a quality state in education. It is outperforming several countries in education. But we have pockets that are not being successful. That is magnified here in Richmond because of the deferred effort, deferred maintenance. And now what's happening is we're playing catch-up. We're struggling with decisions about, again, how much money to put in a boiler or roof. But we also know that we have right now more seats than we have students. We have a little over 9,000 seats vacant compared to our capacity in Richmond Public Schools. Y'all know that? We're overcrowded in elementary in many cases. Our seats are sitting in the middle of the high school. So there have to be tough decisions at some point about, are we gonna let operational costs keep costing us more money, or get that money and redirect it? That is a conversation about, we have to make a decision about our facilities. We typically pay about $300 for a kid just for operational costs, based on the facilities. Multiply that by 23,700-something students. That's a lot of money, isn't it? That is why our poor people cost is typically higher than our surrounding jurisdiction. We have 19% special ed students for our population. A growing ESL population. So we have all the high-risk factors that are jacking up the cost to provide quality education. And I share that with you, because I think it's important that you know every time you pay your taxes, you always ask, why is that? Why am I paying? I know you ask that. Because I pay taxes, I live in the city. And you have a right to know where it's going to be. But here's the thing that I think gets most people, hits people the hardest. Most people sound like paying them for getting results. And that's the challenge I've been given. Turn around and get results. And that's our goal. We're gonna have to do things different than what we've done. We're gonna have to make tough choices, because we need additional resources. But again, I'm not saying that the resources have to be taxed. It's about decisions and reallocation. Because I also need, as much as I value my brothers in blue, both policing and fire. If I can do a good job, I can put them out of business. At the end of the day, if I can do a better job with the product we produce, Chief George, who's a new guy coming in, should get prompt his feet up and relax. Push for thinking, right? That's the goal. And that's why I need your support. To support, when council members are talking about reallocation of resources to support schools, I encourage you to walk in some of our schools. When some people find a little, and they follow, my goodness, I had no idea it was this bad. When someone asks me, why do they need all that technology? Well, I want you to consider the workforce that they're going into, compared to what it was when we went to school. Please do not judge what a school needs now based on what it was when you went to school. Because often people say, why do you need that? But the skillset that you were asked to have to get a job is very different now. Students need to be bilingual in this world. You're much more marketable than that. So we're trying to rebuild our foreign language program, so that our students have an opportunity to be bilingual when they leave us. We're trying to reestablish arts programs that's kind of died out in the community. And since I've been here a little over a year, it seems we really value arts. So why are we not creating our arts in our schools? And giving them opportunity to be exposed to it? We also know that opportunity to speak another language and be exposed to arts actually has a direct impact on the students' core subject areas and their performance going up. So we're making some critical changes. But we're trying to do it in a fiscally responsible, and efficient, and effective manner, so that I can give you a good report on your return investment. We gotta invest in our human capital. Eighty-one percent of our budget is spent on people. So we're raising the bar in accountability, so that we can address those who are not performing at the level that they should be. But part of that process should be, to be fair, is articulating what it is we're expecting you to do. Give you a chance to get better, but then if you don't, I'm comfortable making the tough choices, saying you can't work for us. But I'm also willing to be comfortable to know it's a threat. Only thing you should be concerned about is that we expect you to do your job, because every day when you see the name on that pink check that has, who are the board chair and superintendent? We're testing to use taxpayers, that that person is earning their benefit. And that's how I look at it. If they're not doing their job, I'm spending your money and my money too. And saying that you need to deliver a product and service that is respectful to our community. And we will do it. I'm very thankful with the board on the board that is backing us as we deal with employee performance and addressing it. I'm thankful with the board that is saying that we're willing to be competitive in the market, but we gotta get a return on investment. And building a team. You do know, if you have not been told, that any check that we write out, you can go online and see where we spend it. Y'all know that?
Yeah.
That was put on, under this board, this current administration, out here being transparent. So you know where your money's going. Feel free to call us and ask if we don't understand. Why did that cost that much? Why are we doing this every week? I got my hand in my pocket, so it's okay. Ask us. After you definitely get it. Get out of your pocket. The academic improvement plan is a multi-year plan that is meant to put systems in place to increase academic performance, to support those who are doing well, to close the gap between underperforming and performance, and to also support our teachers. It includes the option that we have at state contract, allows for 200 days. The board has supported, administration's requested funding, so that we have professional development time for our teachers. So they actually have time to hone their trade and their skill. Remember, we're the only industry, at least one of the few, that happens when you leave to go for professional development. We gotta get somebody else to affiliate it for you. And then, the teachers are not sure they're getting the best person to fit in for you. So we're trying to create days where they don't have to worry about that. And they can actually come to work and work in collaborative teams with each other to get better, delivering the service that you're paying them for. That's what we're asking. And that is ask for coal. To make sure they don't fall behind. Because of that big investment we're asking already, we at least wanted to give them coal also, so they don't fall behind. And competitiveness to hit right over Chesterfield. I'm really tired of going to meetings and my colleagues thanking me for preparing someone to work for them. And that's what I get by that meeting. You got some good meeting, we appreciate it. We wanna become the district of choice, not last choice. And so that's what we hope to accomplish with the district. And it's gonna take some courageous decisions, it's gonna take some collaboration, it's gonna take some flexibility on your part, and working with us to do it differently. I'm gonna promise you, but I'm gonna make mistakes, I guarantee it. When we find out we made a mistake, we'll fix it. We won't agree disagree sometimes. But I will assure you that you will always have a person sitting in that chair of myself. Now we're trying to make the best decision possible, make sure that every child who walks into school gets what they deserve. That I can count for every dollar that you give us. Even if we disagree how we're spending, but you still can know how we spend, regardless. And then we will try to be polite and connect through the room. I encourage you to come and join us and participate. We won't wait a day. There's a book out by the guy by the name Jane Devone, who's a business executive for Blue Bell Arts. He's executive, he used to walk around, go around the country talking to people saying, make the schools like a business. One of his major presentations, one of the teachers she finds stood up, and asked, what happens when you have a bad crop of beers in Whitechamp? He says, oh, that's simple, we get rid of it. Short version, paraphrase, she says exactly, we don't get to get rid of children. We gotta take them where they are, move them, and make something better than what came in there. That's what the teacher tells us. We gotta support our teachers while still working on the county. We've got to courage and nurture them to give them resources. We've gotta stop asking them to carpenter to Thanksgiving with school. And no one playing field. So it's not about when you live in Chesterfield, or Whitechamp, or Hemlock. To our teachers that are sitting here, I would say to you, because we're in a different place, we're gonna have to do different things. Our performance is different, our kids' needs are different. So when we prepare ourselves, remember, we're not performing like those other districts here. So that's why we gotta try some different things. It's not that we don't value and respect, and I dare say to anyone, I don't question the effort or the commitment from our teachers. That never crosses my mind. So when we make changes, please know it's not because we're questioning your commitment. When we can't do what we've done, because we're gonna get weaned up. We have some handouts that you should have gotten. That is a letter that we emailed to our staff today, outlining some of the key issues and what was asked. I thought, no, but you can see that, and when you read it later, feel free to email, call, and we'd be more than happy to just let you work with us. But again, transparency, so you can see what we put in as to the means we want to fulfill. Some of those numbers look big, but that's because we're playing catch-up. On the staffing side, almost 90% of those position requests are going back to schools. We're trying to recover from 2009. We actually have more students now than we had in 2009, and we're 40% of the city. So we're actually starting to grow. We won't keep that trend of people coming back to the city, which don't change the success of our city schools. I'm meeting the students, the ones who left. I have family here, they left, they wanted to graduate from Richmond, they moved with the summer, with their children. Comments when you brought some kids together, say, where'd you go? Why'd you go? Give some of our best athletes. Damn, whatever, because they had access to instruments, because they had better field. We would dedicate the field of martial, grab them. I kid you not, ladies and gentlemen. We wanted to do the whole celebration, stick the shoulders in to grab. This would happen, I tried to stick my shoulder. My shoulder almost broke, I couldn't get it to grab. Now I'm not a little guy. Too many times, I can't get it to grab, so I'm broke. That's not what I want for my children. I have a fourth grader who's going to school. That's not what I want for her. So I need you to, some of you got grandchildren. You want the best for your grandchildren. With that said, I have a finance person here, I have a school principal here, I have our student service person here, and I have the head of secondary schools here. I will apologize if the rest of the team is not here, because they're at another school doing a presentation. We're split up. So I'd be more than happy to take a couple of questions, because we have about 10 minutes left. I wanna make sure we leave some time. Questions, yes ma'am?
I support what you've been doing, retiring, starting a job, caring, providing, and providing the resources. I think that, you know, the new shape of the state of school year, I think that the teachers do need more professional development. And the caveat is that we need to make sure we help the game on the professional development, what we had in the past, if not where it needs to be. It needs to be consistent through the school system, it needs to be up to date, and it needs to be thorough. And the other part is, we need to be fully funded for those teachers, that you're gonna ask them to work those extra nine days, and the dog's still there. We need to make sure that we show respect for those teachers for what they did.
We put the line item in there, the way we go through the process, but we started there with the intent, and that's, we hope that will happen. I do respect the fact, just I respect your councilperson here. It's gonna be tough choices. So just to be fair to him, I mean, I know that. But at the end of the day, I'm gonna be selfish. I saw you, and then I would come here, and then I would come over there.
I represent a group of alumni, Thomas Chet from High School in West Dennis. It's a historic landmark.
Beautiful building, honestly.
And here my homeless alumni, who also mentored at the school. And here are my alumnus alumni, who also mentored at the school, from the two oh five to four thirty. Lately, the buses, the activity buses are caught. Just canceled or postponed or whatever. I see that the city has bought new buses. So it's not a shortage of transportation. But I did applaud that one of the teachers ranked the students by GPA scores. And we're trying to enact that attempt, have a two point O to play sports. There's also a junior D C group. The past four years I've worked there as a volunteer, they've taken the troubled students, point four, point five, point six GPAs. And Thomas Jeff's happened about eighty percent of it. It's a babysitter case. The teacher doesn't lock the door, they throw it on the first floor, they jump out the window. I suggested the students up in the second floor. But we have a long list of volunteers, from church, from alumni, from nineteen forty-two to nineteen seventy-one, to Derek. Yet, we've signed up the list of volunteers, barely over a call. Have a list of two hundred, over two hundred volunteers. Yet, when I called, we can help the teachers, two oh five, four thirty, for free. That's a resource, must start to take from there.
One of the things that we're working on, we have a new partnership coordinator, is the ineffectiveness, we have pockets of success and ineffectiveness in others with access using our partners. One is, every partnership now is going to have to have a memorandum of understanding with clearly defined metrics of what's supposed to happen. What you are articulating is what we know, that there are partners that come in, and we have a lot of bodies, and you kill a partnership even because they use inappropriate, they're not used at all, for a variety of reasons. So Mr. Jefferson will make sure that we get your name and number. And we're gonna follow up, try to get fixed, and connect you with Cassandra Wheeler, our coordinator. With regards to Jefferson, we're trying to work on making some changes there. We've made the Ivy program, we're working on converting it to whole school. And we're looking at some other things that I can't get into because of the laws written, but then we'll be addressing some things there, we're trying to prove. But we'll make sure we follow up with you and get that. I did not, and you may be thinking of something else at the time. So a lot of people talk about the bell schedule and the time change, which is something that we'll be discussing later also. So just so you know how that came about. Across the country, there's been a big push related to high school children, students, excuse me, not starting school before eight thirty. Because the American Pediatric Academy is gonna research, and a number of people are gonna research. They found is that actually having high school students start eight thirty or later has an increased safety because if you have a driving population, they found a significant amount of accidents because we're sleeping in the morning. They found that it actually improves attendance. And they have found that it actually improves academic performance. So then we have people saying, "Wait a minute. Well, my younger child needs to get out to sleep." And they did. What they found is that actual high school students, the biological clock, does not even allow them to go to sleep. Got to turn off their sleep time. So even if you said, "Go to bed," and not a clock, their clock does not allow them to really go to bed, for the most part. What they have found though is there's no negative impact yet on elementary students starting early. But you still need to put them in bed to get their ten hours sleep. And then they found that the biological clock allowed them to go to sleep earlier. So the conversation about start times was really about an academic intervention and a safety issue. And I would say any of you all, visit a high school first period. Let alone be a P E teacher in first period. The other reason the change was made, our bell schedules are all over the place. We actually have seven elementary schools that aren't gonna start at eight, ten. So we have some going already at that time. We got a couple of middle schools that aren't on the high school schedule, it's just all over the place. So it was also about a shift to get more academic, I mean, operational efficiency. Again, every elementary, every middle school, and every high school on the same schedule. It was also meant to give operational efficiency with the bus issue that we're having because of their challenges with crisscrossing the city. So it all had academic and operational efficiencies, again, trying to be more favorable to taxpayers, but using this strategy also to improve our academic performance. We absolutely realize that the challenge is with childhood. So we're collecting data on what schools have and what's don't. At some point, we're gonna have to convene all of our providers, Y, Boys and Girls Club, City Record, and talk about how many of you can come to the table and plug a hole if we make this switch. And we also have to have the conversation that is, the quality of the programs is not so widely different that one segment of town or school gets X person to provide services, but it's not as good as the other. That is going to be a challenge for us when we get to try and load the playing field of quality. Make sure, we make sure we're getting fair, quality, aftercare program. The other comment is that our bus fleets were aging to the point that every time they repaired a bus, soon as they drove it off, within the same weekend, we'd be back on a pair shuttle. So we replaced a third of them. Took capital from them and replaced about seventy-eight buses. Our goal is to buy another seventy-eight roughly this year. And we will have turned over two-thirds, and now we can put them back on the regular cycle of replacement about every twelve to two years. The buses that we have now are equipped with cameras. I just had a viewing incident on the bus now, so if something happens on the bus, I can see it. The buses will be equipped with GPSs, so we can see where the drivers are at and why they're not hitting their targets on time. So we're also increasing accountability with technology. They're also prewired for the stop-arm cameras, so if the city ever passes a warning, and wanna use that as a revenue producer? The fun buses? They are prewired so that anytime we can add that feature on to them, and have the ability to get those people who don't wanna stop. So that's just other information maybe that you might want to add, but we can make sure to get your number. Where's the lady?
I have a question about some of the at-risk schools, are you, do you have anything in place to support parents? You know, that are sending their kids, and do you have programs in place to help support the families?
Well, one of the things that we're trying to do is not necessarily duplicate. One of the things that we have to do is try to stay in our light. So our best thing we can do is connect them to services, in many cases, that the city already has in place, rather than trying to duplicate it in the city, and it costs you more, within the school district, it costs you more money. So one of the responsibilities of our student services, they also try to, when they're working with families, first, they go to home visits. So an attendance issue really could be a social service issue. So when they realize it's a social service issue, they try to connect the families and the resources to remove that barrier so they can actually come to school. Sometimes we get court help because we try to tell someone to do this and do X, Y, and Z, and we get resistance. So we're not there, but we're trying. We're trying to also increase with our growing bilingual population, increasing development, the budget has for the Wellcome Center, like a lot of districts have done, so your intake process to provide support for those families so they can get off on the right foot, rather than they are lost in our system. So we're slowly trying to build capacity to do a better job. But I would dare not say to you that my goal is to become the person who gives those services, as a goal, as a person who's able to connect them to those services, because then we're... Teachers and staff are overwhelmed now because they're asked to do so many things beyond teaching. But we do need to create a system where teachers can recognize it. And that's where my focus is. So we can recognize their challenges and be an intervention for them.
Two thousand six, people were leaving sick at the elementary school. Mr. Music has done a great job of turning neighborhood school around and making things happen. Welcome to a lot of other schools in the area. A lot of great high schools, community, Maggie Walker, Open High, alleged to be a middle school. It is holding us back, it's keeping this community from being all of potential. What are we gonna do to support the middle schools so folks feel like they can allow children to come? They vote with their feet, you know, that's, I've seen it, it's painful, because I want to see the soup run.
So I'm gonna say yes and no.
You're saying?
The yes part is, real or perceived, middle school lives in a high spot in performance. The reality is, it's yes and a no. I give an example when I share with the board why we're also really still focusing on our elementary schools also. In our current fee of payment process, a middle school inherits a group of students from multiple elementary schools. So in the current accountability system, if you are getting eighty percent of your kid being his nanny, twenty percent or not. Twenty percent of the five-year student elementary school from three or four elementary schools now becomes a large number of students. Guess what we just did? We merged all into the middle school. So you couple that with all other dynamics, teenage drama, and it becomes a challenge. So firstly, we have four of the eight middle schools that have new purchases. I bought new purchases in place. I will tell you, as of yesterday, six of them next year will have new purchases. And Benford is a new model, has been tried, idea that we're pumping one point two million dollars into to make it the first springboard slash arts integration school in the country. Every student in that building, if it's funded, will get additional license, be your first one-to-one middle school. So no more just talking about Chesterfield. Now they're gonna get to take it home. We're not here yet. I'm gonna get back, so home. One-to-one is, we made Brown a whole school model so that we take Benford, the Ivy program, expose and train teachers to share that structural rigor and knowledge throughout the entire country. The springboard program is a college board program, which is pretty easy. Because one of the things we have to cover too is, our students are not doing well in high school when I mentioned college board because we didn't have a middle school program that was prepared to do well in AP in high school. So we're trying to close that gap. What has happened is, is we learned more about the springboard model, what we're doing in Benford. I already got it. She got it already. I guess springboard is a creative program. So what we hope to do is create strong foundations. Bottom line, we're gonna start with our corporate, make sure everyone gets high-quality instruction. But then we want to create a line for the term signature programs in Ivy schools, so people can look at what they're getting. So we're taking away, chiseling away, shaping what we hope will be in future.
I just wanna make sure that I understand the schedule and the mission correctly. At the end of the day, if all of our students went to school at nine o'clock, right? There wouldn't be enough buses.
We could not, if we, if we had, we would love to have them all at the same time, like eight thirty or nine, we don't have enough buses here.
So if there were more buses, then there would just be a punishment, we'll do the highest hopes of that and we'll be done.
As basic form, yes. Yes. As basic simplest form, with small little nuances, like, I can't have thirty drivers out for one day like you say.
I mean, we're setting up a sentence, so how about giant bakes it all? I mean, is, is there, I mean, recognizing that there's resistance to younger children going to school early. And as you said, the childcare issue is a family dynamic issue. Right, it's a, it's a scheduling issue. When you have a child in fifth grade and a child in ninth grade, they don't, they work at the time. Is there, is there any possibility that the bus issue could be addressed within the current financial framework?
Well, I mean, I'll put it to you this way. I'm doing this from here right around Benford. Seventy-eight buses on a lease, it's five years. Seven-year lease, costs one point one million dollars.
For a year?
Yes, until we get out of this. When we went to buy, when we tried to do that, remember what that number was? So it's eighty thousand of us.
Eighty thousand, ninety, seventy-eight buses?
Ninety thousand of us. So that gives an idea why we couldn't buy them. So that's the challenge. So as we turn over our fleet, get newer, and then the seven-year model, because the replacement is twelve, fifteen years. What we're planning is, releasing the seven, but then after that, they're ours. This is paying off, and it's shorter than a replacement cycle, so we're gonna stagger it. And then hopefully it gets, or we're not leasing, we're just replacing it on a regular cycle. That's what, someone, other than a massive infusion right now, we wouldn't possibly even get that.
But we're not there now.
I'd like to convince those people that being a...
Are there schools that use two more buses than our, like, what, it's gonna use less buses?
One of the things that we do need to do is, and I think Ford needs your support because it's a tough situation, is we've gotta address our batteries, that's the only thing that's still...
Our batteries?
Yes. Where your feeders have us.
Tensils?
Tensils. And it's a tough thing. And people sometimes don't understand that if you do those, while I understand it's not popular, you wanna do it, it's about everybody who's paying a cost. For the cost of that, every time we run a bus, that affects everybody, not just the person who's getting on the bus. And the bus guy just walk in.
So I'm not sure what I have to understand, and if not everybody doesn't understand it, we can move on, but I don't know what else to do, but okay, man.
We're not efficient in our roundship because of feeders have us, crisscross our buses, and all that shit. And we're giving a lot of additional transportation because of social needs.
We've overrun a little bit, we're starting to get into what the next meeting is about. Dr. Ben and Glenn are gonna post, which is the schedule of the bell changes and the buses. So I don't wanna eat any more of your time, I wanna thank Dr. Ben for coming. If you have any questions, they are happening. The meeting is gonna start as soon as I can get out of the way, so if you have any other questions, feel free to stick around and ask Glenn and Dr. Ben.